I'm going to call to order the September 19th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency, and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Mr. Bob Schneider. All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding one matter of substantial exposure to litigation. No action was taken. And to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the Firefighters Association, Local 522, and no item was taken either. All right, that brings us to Item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda but Within the Jurisdiction of the City Council. This is a time for a public forum, although we, as noted on our agenda, were prohibited by state law from having a discussion or taking action on items that are brought up under Item 1A. We do ask that anyone wishing to speak on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards at the door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. And to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, which indicates the agenda item that we're currently considering. We recognize that for some folks, speaking in public in front of a massive audience can promote some anxiety, so we do ask that there not be any boos, or cat calls, or applause, or other demonstrations, and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chamber. So with that, we have a couple requests to speak under Item 1A, and the first is by Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor William Lowell, of West Sacramento. For the record, it was almost four weeks ago, I discovered something I believe I should have been told about 30 years ago, if it was available. And this little folding stool that's made mainly for the shower, well, it makes a real good stool for when you're waiting for the bus, too. And it takes up a lot less room, and it's got twice the seating space, and it's stronger than the one I had before. And I only paid eight bucks for this one at the Goodwill. You can get a new one for $59 plus tax at the supply place there at Harbor and West Capital. But I believe if the doctors were more informed about this, like the neurologist doctors and foot doctors, when somebody gets severely injured and knowing that patient has to stand and wait for the bus, I think there's going to be a movement towards recommending these, especially if there's not adequate seating and so forth. Because, like I say, very comfortable and very sturdy, and I just wish I'd have known about it 30 years ago. So it's this way, letting other people know that they're available, and more people will be more comfortable at the bus stop in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. I'm sure Mayor Portemvegas will let Yolo Bus know that we can get much $8 bus stops instead of the couple hundred thousand dollar ones that we buy now. Right, next is Trishis Tanyonis. Welcome.
Hi there. Good evening. I'm Trishis Tanyonis. I work with Yellow Family Service Agency, but tonight I represent a countywide task force called the Yellow County Screening Task Force. We are starting a project that really measures how our children are doing, because we really want to put that on everyone's radar screen, that when we view how our communities are doing, we look at how our children are doing as one of the key factors. We have started a whole project in partnership with the Yellow Children's Alliance here in West Sacramento, throughout the county, and what we're doing is, we're measuring children zero to five, screening kids for social, emotional, behavior, health, family stability, and a few other things, but it's a very measured performance, so that when we talk about what do we need, we know more specifically what we need. We're telling you about it because we'll be coming back to you with results as we get them. We have started, the project is underway, funded by First Five Yellow as part of an expanded family resource project, really about, really specifically identifying issues and identifying potential solutions. I do have a two-page report for you. I'll leave it with your clerk. Thank you very much. Good to see you all.
Thanks, Trish. All right, those are the only requests we had under Item 1A, so we're going to proceed to Item 1B, which is Council Communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. I just want to report that there were several meetings, last one on Monday, for the Yellow Natural Heritage Program GPA Board. There were meetings back in August, and then the most recent one on Monday concerning ongoing review of our management and our financial situation. So that continues, and we'll have a more thorough. There is a briefing in today's consent agenda on the status of the heritage program, which I think addresses some of that, but just on making you aware that we're continuing to meet. That's it.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yes. The West Sacramento JPA Flood Protection 900, RD 900, City of West Sacramento, and RD 537, met last week. And this really pertains to the properties that are south along the Sacramento River and the city of West Sacramento. It's been a very, very difficult issue, because there were homes that potentially needed to be moved, a different kind of fixes for that six-and-a-half-mile stretch that is absolutely critical that the city of West Sacramento complete. And one of the reasons, and probably the main reason, is because of FEMA. Because if we do that six-and-a-half-mile stretch, and then we do a couple of the very small stretches that are there, and this one I'll refer to as Segment B, we can reach that 50% threshold, and/or will be very, very close at least. And I think that FEMA will look on that favorably. The board took the action that we were going to identify Alternative 2 as the preferred alternative for Wessex AFCA. And that includes a cutoff wall, and that includes setback levy, so that also includes the taking of some of our residents' homes. I really have to give kudos to staff, to Bill and his whole department that have been working on flood control. They have vented this issue with the people that are affected. We chose a scenario number seven, which saved, I think it was, three additional homes. And the people were very, very appreciative of Wessex AFCA, and quite frankly, the city council, for taking the extra steps and really trying to explain things, and listening to their concerns, and trying to not affect or affect the least number of people that we possibly could. Now, there are some people that aren't quite, aren't really happy, but at the same time, we've certainly narrowed those number of peoples down to, in essence, sort of a handful. And so that was a very, very big decision, and a really a step forward, because now we can move to 65% of design, and once we hit that threshold, then we will be able to go out to the people that are affected, and we will be able to say, okay, we'll negotiate a price for either relocation of their home or outright purchase, but it's a very good, it seems like it's a very, very good arrangement between Wessex AFCA, the feds, which I wish they were a little more involved, but that's a whole different story, and of course, the state of California. So we're really moving forward. I think we're moving forward in the right direction, and I'm sure you will all be hearing about some of the issues that are still outstanding, but also about the good work that our staff has done. And so I just, like I said earlier, I give them a whole bunch of kudos. They did a very, very good job. And anyway, that was it. Very, very difficult, tricky issue.
Yeah, extraordinarily challenging for everyone involved, and also, as you've said, very important for the entire, for the entire community, both in terms of direct flood protection and in terms of our ability to continue economic development, and for residents to have affordable flood insurance, all of those reasons. It's been a critical, critical priority for the community, and you've, I think, given appropriate acknowledgement to staff, but I do think, you know, we need to say, "Good job, Bill," as well. I mean, this has been a very tough, difficult assignment for any, for any elected official to have to be, to deal with these questions in a way that would advance our community's overall interest in flood protection, while also really listening to the residents who were directly affected by the project, and balancing those interests with all of the residents and businesses affected by the outcome of the project together, and that has not been easy. There's been a lot of screaming and yelling, a lot of, "Can we just look at this one more time? Can we solve this one last problem?" And that's a great testament to your leadership on the issue, and to the experience and maturity that you brought to the whole conversation throughout, that I think caused folks to look, to realize that this was being done in good faith, and that you were trying to find, you and your colleagues were trying to find answers that would work on behalf of the community, and on behalf of the homeowners to the maximum extent possible. So on behalf, I know, I know the whole council and the community appreciates your continuing work and leadership on the whole issue of flood protection and on this major milestone in particular. So thanks. All right. No other ones? We haven't had a month. Okay, I have a couple. Last week was the Metro Chamber's annual study mission. This year's study mission was to Denver. The Denver region, as the council all knows, we, each year, the Chamber sponsors a trip where civic business and government leaders from throughout the Six County Sacramento region travel to another place in the country to see what they're, what they're doing, lessons that we might learn, how they've solved challenges that are still difficult for us. We've been doing this for many, many years. We've learned a lot from various regions. This year's trip was to Denver. Both Mr. Tuttle and I participated in the trip this year. I was the trip's vice chair and led a panel on regional cooperation at the, at the trip. It was a valuable trip. We actually grabbed an item tonight on food trucks. That was one of the, you know, the issues there. There was a lot of discussion around energy, around beer, which is also another big, you know, big issue here, around downtown redevelopment. We also had some, this will sound counterintuitive, but we had some useful discussions about the port of Denver as well. So it was a productive session, both in terms of the specific learning about what Denver's doing, and where they have succeeded, and where they failed, and lessons that we might learn, but also to reinforce the continuing reputation of West Sacramento in our own region. And so being, you know, participating in that trip is partly oriented towards our colleagues and investors and others in this own, in this own region, to remind them that West Sacramento is a key place, and that, that theme did consistently reemerge, that West Sacramento is an example in this region of even the best things that are happening in Denver. So it was a, it was a good trip. Tomorrow, we're hosting the meeting, I think, for the first time, or at least the first time since Art Edmonds was on the Board of Supervisors. We're hosting the Board of Directors meeting for the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. So they'll be coming here for their monthly board meeting in the morning, and then we'll be the launching point for a rural-urban connectors tour that's throughout Yellow County. The first two stops in that tour are, excuse me, are here in West Sacramento, so the board and other key leaders, but mainly the CACOG board, will be going to Farm Fresh to You here in the city, which was one of our awardees at the State of the City event, and then following that to the port, and then to some other places in the county after that. So it's going to be a great opportunity to highlight West Sacramento's role, the nexus of the agricultural industry in the region, and distribution, and processing, and consumption. So it's going to, that's going to be a good highlight for us as well. The Streetcar Policy Committee did meet since our last council meeting. We're proceeding with, I think the main issue, coming to the council, we're proceeding with a revision to the, what do we call them? It's not a JPA, but the, whatever the, the document that we've signed that commits us all to participate in this process together, we're making some revisions to that to recognize both how far along we are already in the process, we're not just kind of thinking about this anymore, we're doing it, and then second, the role that CACOG is playing as the managing partner, and then the agreement also sort of outlines what each of the jurisdictions is going to do. So that will be on its way here shortly. And then also, next month, we'll be appointing a new business or civic community leader, leader to the Streetcar Policy Committee from our city, since the, James Moranti from PG&E is no longer in that assignment, so. But it was a productive meeting. It was, I mean, it was, it was, I think, Mr. Viegas was there as well, Mr. McGowan, but the city of Sacramento is definitely enthusiastic, engaged, feeling a sense of ownership about this project, which we hadn't seen until these last two or three sessions, so I think we're on a good page on that. This coming weekend, I will be in Dallas for the U.S. Conference of Mayors Leadership Meeting, and then in DC for the Mayor's Water Council, at the end of the month, to lead a session on flood protection, both levies and on FEMA and flood insurance rules. The council's aware of and leading the national work of the mayors on this issue, and we're trying to take it to the next level. It becomes particularly critical right now. I think we've had in our packets last week, a copy of the letter from, from the feds denying our credit allocation, and so it's become, you know, it was already super, hyper-important that we get this resolved, and so I'm going to be in DC to try to enlist the help of the other mayors in the country, but also directly the Corps and FEMA on both of those issues. So, and then, we have, we, last Friday, submitted our proposal for the mayor's challenge, for the Bloomberg Mayor's Challenge, that we discussed with the council before. We're going to, I know we've got the video for it, but just as a background, the Bloomberg Philanthropies issued a challenge to mayors of cities throughout the United States to come up with innovative ideas that could be implemented quickly, and then potentially replicated elsewhere in the country. So these were to be ideas that no one was already doing, at least not in this precise form, and that could be replicated, and that would make a meaningful impact on people's lives. We decided earlier, early on, that we would, to align with the city council's strategic plan, focus our ideation on the food cluster, and so we invited to join a team of leaders from the community, folks from various aspects of the food cluster here in the community, both from the world of agriculture, both broadly in the county and the region, but also local urban, small urban farmers, from production and distribution, places like NorCal and others, from the consumption side, restaurants like Wicked West, and other entrepreneurs in that field as well, as well as a wide variety of other partners. And so they all came together. We were for two, one half-day session, one full-day session, a major investment of time by some very, some very busy folks, who were committed to helping advance this work with some facilitation. We came up with a bunch of really good ideas, and I want to emphasize, the point of this was partly to respond to the mayor's challenge, but just as much to kickstart the work that the council had identified in its strategic plan, and this, we felt this would be a good way to start with something tangible, rather than, let's develop a 27-point plan that we will then forward on to 16 different agencies, and nothing will ever happen. Let's start with something real, and then we can build from there. So the kinds of ideas that came up out of that session were, one example was the notion of creating, I forget then, what we called it, the, not the, the distribution of food, the distribution essentially of community service agriculture, the Farm Fresh to You model, but on a scale that would match our garbage and recycling trucks. So that, in the same way that we have a city utility that picks up garbage and recycling, could we mount a city utility who's, that delivered fresh local produce, to try to both take that to scale, achieve some economies of scale, and get healthy, inexpensive, affordable local food to local residents, and provide a more stable, solid, large revenue stream to local farmers and producers? So that was one idea that came up. A second was a grow-tel, which was, the notion being, convert an existing motel into a site that would be, could be used to, essentially to incubate new urban farmers that might live there as, and also grow onsite in small, in small amounts, but recognizing the challenge of today's agricultural economy, where it's, where there are a lot of folks who want to enter agriculture at that scale and do urban farming, but may not have grown up on a farm. And we don't really have great career pathways to become a farmer if your parents weren't a farmer. And so the idea was to try to think about a reuse of existing infrastructure to accomplish that. So we had lots and lots of actually really good, interesting, innovative ideas that weren't being done elsewhere, and we, then our staff team did a lot of work to investigate what was actually feasible, to propose, and then to implement within the one-to-two-year timeframe that the mayor's challenge anticipates, and within the budget that we would, we could potentially win of a million to $5 million from the mayor's challenge if we were to succeed. And so, and that then boiled down to a proposal that I think that we've got, we, to our, to our quick proposal, we attached a video, as was one of the options for this, and we're going to show that tonight, so maybe we could queue that up. And this, the video is essentially a summary of the proposal for the...
Mayor Christopher Cobaldon of the city of West Sacramento, California. Our city is in the heart of one of the world's most productive agricultural regions, and we're at the center of food research, production, distribution, and innovation. But like so many communities across the country, West Sacramento residents suffer from high rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health-related elements connected to food. Our answer to the mayor's challenge: farm to fast food. Cities like mine all across the United States are encouraging urban farming on small pieces of property in the city and on the fringe, where folks can grow not only their own food, but produce food for local food markets. But one of the big challenges is getting access to restaurants and other ways of selling local produce on a reliable basis. Our idea with farm to fast food is to create mechanisms and new entrepreneurs that will be steady customers for urban farms just like this one here in West Sacramento, and urban farms all across the country, so that they can make their small businesses flourish and create a healthy farm environment throughout our country. Here's what we're going to do. Our farm to fast food initiative integrates three proven ideas: a micro-restaurant incubator, plus local foods, both produce and locally raised meats, plus the convenience model of drive-through fast food. We're going to purchase and convert a dying fast-food drive-through restaurant, the kind in downtowns all across the country, and make it into an incubator where different startup small restaurateurs can operate out of the place on different days of the week. They'll get access to a licensed commercial kitchen in a shared facility, and can share back office and some marketing, too. They'd sign a contract to source their food from local farms through the cooperative. That's going to give small urban farmers and other local producers the kind of aggregation and stability they need to strengthen their own business viability. We game stormed with experts and disruptors across sectors, using the mayor's challenge to inspire and to nudge us. City Hall was just buzzing about big data, about crowdsourcing, facilitated sharing, mobile tech, neuroeconomics, peer-to-peer collaboration, and geospatial apps, and about the radical improvements we were starting to imagine and scope for people's lives. Our idea is to take down the obstacles. We would love more residents to start local urban farms, whether in their own backyard gardens, or on abandoned pieces of property in the heart of our urban communities. But what are you supposed to do after you've eaten 1,600 cucumbers, and you've got a lot more to go? The challenge for urban farms is finding local, stable markets for their produce. And consumers, well, what family doesn't want their kids to have fresh, healthy local foods? The challenge is, on the way home from work, when the kids are waiting, hungry, you've got to grab whatever quick, convenient food that you can that's affordable, and fast food has always provided the answer. So our approach: if you can't beat them, join them. Growing an army of local entrepreneurs using local suppliers to transform fast food into an engine for healthy people and healthy farms? Sounds impossible? Well, in West Sacramento, we don't shy away from the impossible. We specialize in it.
All right, so that's what we submitted. We will, so the next stage is that Bloomberg Philanthropies is evaluating all the submissions from all across the country. We don't, we actually don't know how many there have been. Some were north of 300 to 400 sent in a postcard saying that they were going to apply, but then, you know, you actually have to do it. So we don't, it'll be less than that number, but we don't, but we don't know how many. So our expectation is in that we will hear in the mid-part of October whether or not we're moving on to the next round, which is a boot camp essentially in New York, where Bloomberg Philanthropies is headquartered, which should be November 12th, I think, 12th and 13th. And then from that state, and so at that point, they, they're essentially coaching through several of these ideas from throughout the country, and then after that, they will be settling down on the set of finalists, and the finalists all are all, will all be awarded $1 million each, and then the winner, which, who will be awarded $5 million. So we're excited about it. This is, this was a different approach for us to take in terms of putting something together, but I certainly like it better than the 27-page task force report. And I want to, you know, really acknowledge and thank both the city manager and a lot of folks on the team, Carol, Ernesto, and Charlene, and John, and Dan Harris, and Mike, and a whole bunch of folks who, you know, put on their thinking caps, tried to come up with, with both great ideas and credit as it could work, and then put together a quick application for its consideration. So we're hopeful. As far as we know, there's no one else in the country that's proposed anything like this at this stage, so we will keep you abreast of our progress. All right, Item 1C is appointments of boards and commissions. We don't have any of those this evening, so we're going to proceed to the consent agenda, which is Items 2 through 13. Any item consent, any member wishes to remove, or a question? Did you say four?
Six.
All right. Item 2 is consideration of a settlement agreement between the city of West Sacramento and West River View LLC. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Mike. Just a quick question with the, with the settlement coming in. Will this be a future agenda item? I know we had, there's been talk about how that money gets, what the, what the use of that money will be, and it's not for this agenda item, I just want to make sure that was captured.
Correct. Absolutely. We'll bring this back to the council for direction if the settlement agreement is approved.
Okay. That's, just wanted to clarify that. That was all. Thank you.
You, too. Good. Item 4 is consideration of amended authorized position list for 2012-13. Mr. Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Phil, on the authorized position list for police, my recollection, at our last council meeting, or the council meeting before, there is a lot of discussion about the four lieutenants, and there was a, it seemed to me a consensus not to go that, that route with the four lieutenants. You know, I think, at least the discussion at that point, what I heard was that we need to maybe look at, you know, without trying to micromanage the police department, we need to look at emphasizing boots on the ground. I mean, we're making great strides. We had a lot of good response now, folks that live along the river, and kind of the cleanup activities have been going on there. Obviously, the police are doing a good job, but my recollection was that the four lieutenant issue was an issue that council did not want to go there, but it could be...
There is actually no change in the amended authorized position list as it relates to the police. It was the lieutenants and the captains, and if you'll note, the captain position was approved, but not authorized to be filled until it came back. So that's, I believe that's my recollection.
Okay, so basically, then the captain, the lieutenant, looks like, and the police sergeant are all pending further review.
Correct.
All right. That's fine.
Herr Portemvegas?
So, Mr. ...
All right. (laughing). All right. (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
So, Mr. Phil, so I just want to flag some of this on it is actually it's also in police that it's not a change on here. But if we arrive at a point, we have to have management, we have to have a level of management in the city. And and so I want to make sure that that we're kept abreast. If there's a change, if there is a organizing of our of management, I want to come back to this issue. Right now, I prefer the structure that we have: lieutenants, one captain, potentially and a chief. If we get to a point where lieutenants see themselves as rank-and-file and not management in our association, you know, in our associating in that way, we have to we have to revisit that issue. We cannot have a single manager for the entire police department and have that only be the chief. So I just want I want to flag it. So if there's if that becomes an issue, that we revisit the question of what's the right structure of a department? In the same way that in the in the fire department, we've got the battalion chiefs who are who are also management. So it's not a change for this document at all, I just want to flag it in case there is a change in the perceived status of of what the lieutenant's role is. All right, thanks. Item six, Phil, this is you, too. Consideration of potential refinancing of the 1999 Community Facility District 12 Rayleigh Field Special Tax Revenue Bonds. Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, Paul.
Mr. Bloomberg will answer those questions.
Hi, Paul. Hey, Sacramento County River Cats, have they been all apprised of this already? Or have they been briefed? Or are we waiting for some kind of action from us to get the go-ahead before we brief them?
No, I have to say, we've been working very closely with the Sacramento River Cats with their representative, Dan Vistika, as we looked at the refinancing of the CFD 12 bonds. They will be participants on the finance team because of the nature of the credit being basically the revenues off of the stadium. So they're part of our team.
How about Sac County?
Now, we haven't met with Sac County. It isn't going to be necessary to get Sac County approval on this refinancing. We will let them know once we get closer to proceeding. What we wanted to do tonight is just to let you know that this is a great opportunity. And once we present this to council, then we would be able to go out and talk to the county about the opportunity.
Yeah, because I would like, I mean, Sac County, you know, they they're on the the JPA and the Financing Authority and things. And I just think that Phil or whoever their representative is going to be this year, that they should at least be just brought up to speed and say that there's there's an opportunity here for some people save a little bit of money. It's not a lot, but a little bit. And potentially, there may be some bigger savings, you know, depending on where the different rulings go on on the big bond that's already been the $33 million bond or whatever it was that was already used. So but I would like to see them at least get briefed.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. The Sac County was there when we needed them, when no one else was, and
That's right.
And so they they should, I mean, the first thing in the morning, they should be aware of what we're contemplating. So they should they should feel like they're they're total partners in this, especially because the JPA board is we're now barely meeting once a year, if that.
Yeah.
So we don't have a formal mechanism to communicate, and they should they should they should know immediately that we're contemplating this.
Mayor Protembiagis?
Yeah, just to take it back on that real quickly, just to underscore. So so thank you very much, because this is very important, and I think this is in line with many of our fiscal policies. But this is a significant, I mean, this is a half a million dollar savings in the work that you've been doing. So I just want to underscore the dollar amount that that comes along with what is otherwise a consent item, and this is a significant amount of money. So thank you for the for the work.
Okay, item, we're going to return to item three, which is consideration of budget update. Mayor Protembiagis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wondered also, because it's consent, so we don't spend a lot of time on these issues, but I think this one certainly bears at least a moment to acknowledge the work that staff has done. Item three on the consent agenda item really provides us with a an update on our budget. And I think in times like these, it bears sharing just a very quick snippet of what staff has concluded in the staff report. And I'll just share with folks who don't have it in front of them that the two-year balanced budget ending June 30, the council actually, the city is in is in we're in firm financial shape. And I want to emphasize that because I think there's there's enough doubt out there at the moment about just exactly how the local municipalities are managing their budgets. And I think in West Sacramento, we're in very, very good shape, but not without some very difficult decisions. And I think that, you know, the staff report goes on to say that this has happened through staff reductions, employee concessions, and over since 2008, we've reduced our workforce by 20%. So there's been significant work that's gone into this. But we also maintain a very healthy general fund reserve, which allows us to do the kinds of things that I think people are very proud of. So I just wanted to emphasize that as well. But it's also important to remember that the this balanced budget for fiscal years 11, 12, and 12, 13 require the use of significant one-time monies, not reserves, and continued employee concessions, which, you know, we don't take very lightly, but in order to maintain an entire a healthy city, those are the kinds of practices we've had to utilize to continue to balance our books. So I just wanted to pull some of those items out, so I think it's worth noting. It's not, I mean, it's consent for us, but for the rest of the world, I think it's it's important to hear that. Thank you.
I agree. And, you know, in the last couple of weeks is, I think a lot of folks in the community sometimes forget that we're still living under a budget that was reduced dramatically. It may seem like it's all done, but we've had no new infusion of a large amount of revenues. And what we've done, what we've accomplished is by our employees participating in some savings by a much smaller workforce, as you say. But that does translate, and we've preserved all the critical services and maintained a good level of service in this community. But it's the reason why the pool, you know, is can't be open, all pools cannot be open every moment. We were, you know, we're one of the only jurisdictions in the region that hasn't closed any pools. And it's the reason, you know, why why not, you know, the we resurface the roads when we get some money to resurface the roads. I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not rich today. I think we've the danger's always been, as we've tried to protect the critical levels of services, sometimes we might, we take it for granted. And so I do, all of those, everything that Mr. Mayor Protembiagis is absolutely true, but it's just a reminder for for residents in the community that that, you know, we've all had to make some sacrifices, and those won't change in the in for several years. I mean, the the reductions that we've had to make that are all at the margins, and nobody's no, you know, the but they still matter, and and they're there, they are there for a reason. We're not, we're not flush by any means. We're we are, we think, we hope, we're we've passed the bottom, which means no more additional major reductions. But it doesn't, it doesn't mean we're anywhere near being able to start to restore everything that was cut back then. It's going to be a long time coming, if ever.
On October 3rd, I will be presenting a much more detailed report to try to emphasize some of the points council has made and provide some graphs and others that will be helpful to the public and businesses to see what we've done historically and and the situation we're in currently.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just say is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, thanks, Phil, for the update, and and I'm looking forward to the to the to our next meeting when you do the presentation, because I think one of the messages, too, is to the mayor's point, you know, we are not in out of the woods yet. But does this 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 council and the city has been very diligent and disciplined, and I think going forward, this sends a good message that we're not we're not resting on laurels at all, we're not done. And this kind of regular feedback and reporting we get on our financial situation is important. So I want to say thank you and looking forward to it. Kristof?
Yeah, I would just say, it's really one of the major issues that's out and about within the community. And one of the reasons is because of Stockton, San Bernardino, and and all of these are not all, but some other cities that have gone bankrupt. And so a number of people ask me, you know, you see them at the grocery store, the post office, whatever, how are we doing financially, you know? We're not going to be bankrupt, are we? And I tell them, no, you know? I mean, there certainly are some pitfalls that we just can't get our hands around right now, and that's the assessments of properties. We don't know how many properties are being reassessed, and that really affects us. I mean, if there's one area, I think, that's really hurt the city of West Sacramento from a financial perspective besides the state of California, and and that is the fact that so many of our properties, commercial, industrial, and residential, have been reassessed. And so you do have less money that you have to work with. But everybody is exactly right. We've made some very difficult decisions. Staff, you guys have come up with some really, really, you know, decent ideas to 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 sort of level out whatever is going on as far as the budget's concerned, instead of just automatically coming in and making just a whole bunch of reductions. You really try to keep as many people going as you possibly can. And I think that, quite frankly, I think we're doing a pretty decent job. We're going to that two-year cycle. It's going to just sort of level things out a little bit, and I see sales taxes actually come up just a little bit. And so there are some stars out there, and and there are, there are things out on the horizon that that say, you know, okay, you're going to weather this storm. And our employees have been absolutely marvelous, you know? They've they've stepped to the plate, and they've done some things as far as it's not, they're not looking forward to it. But at the same time, they've done some things that really make West Sacramento continue to go. We're the sort of the goose that lays the golden egg, and, you know, we need to be able to not have everything, not have our heads chopped off, so we can't do that. And I think we're doing a pretty good job. So I want to thank you for the report.
Well, we also got lucky this year, the legislature, for the first time in five years, didn't screw us with something new. I mean, we're still dealing with the other stuff, but there was no new, new, big, multimillion-dollar takeaway.
Couldn't find one.
This year, because they've already taken everything away. So we did get lucky in that respect. But just one other reminder for all of us, and certainly for the community, too, that as the economy starts to heat up again, and I think we're all confident it will, we don't know when, but as it heats up again, the art, one of our toughest times is going to be right at that moment. Because as people, as folks start building, whether it's new houses or or building new restaurants or other businesses, we will face a lot of additional costs, as we have to provide police service and fire service and resurface, redo the sidewalks. But because of the way the property tax system works, we won't see very much revenue in the beginning period of of any new economic growth. It's still by far and away the right answer for the community long-term, and we will it will all balance out in the end. But for the for the first several years of a recovery of an economic recovery for the country and even for our own community, the city's finances won't experience a big rebound just because of the way the property tax system works. And so it will, it will be incumbent on all of us to exercise continuing discipline and to community engagement to help, you know, folks really understand what will seem like a contradiction. There's all this stuff happening, why are, why are we not rich with money at the city? And that's why. And and we've been trying to prepare for that. It's one of the reasons why we have tried to assure that we have a a reasonable reserve and to be fiscally prudent so that we would be ready when that moment happened. But we have to keep reminding ourselves, so thanks.
Oh, Mr. Johannesen?
Yeah, thanks. Phil, you probably don't. Yeah, I just wanted to, I know there's, to me, this is light at the end of the tunnel, and it's been a long three years dealing with this, and maybe a little bit longer. But one of the things I did want to note is that our general fund is stable now, at least it looks like it right now. But in the past, we received $23 million a year through our redevelopment agency. Now that's down to $2.5 million. And so what that means is is we're going to really need to focus on how we continue to fund infrastructure, which typically has been done through a redevelopment agency. So that's one of the areas, I know all councils are concerned about that and coming up with ways to to deal with that. But it is a significant loss that we've had, and it's going to impact our ability to do basic infrastructure-type things. The the budget we're talking about is general fund, it's streets and roads and police and fire and things of that nature. But, you know, really, the long-term money is is really tough right now.
Point. All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. Item 11 is a status report on November election-related activities. Mayor Protembiagis?
It's the last one, I promise. But I just wanted to acknowledge the city clerk for for taking some proactive steps to try and resolve what has been just a regular frustration for folks in our community, and that is getting quick returns on election night. And so I think, you know, this year, I think, as you indicated here, again, again, it's consent, but it's worth, it's worth bringing to the folks' attention that the West Sacramento will be a site for scanning the ballots. And I think for the first time ever, we should experience at least a little uptick in the return time on on how things are moving through our city, rather than having to chug the woodland every, you know, by donkey. Well, it wasn't much faster than a donkey, because I actually forced myself to get in a vehicle last election cycle to just see exactly what happens to our ballots, and it's not that much faster. Even though we have a police escort, by the time you go through all the steps that are needed, it is a very, it's grueling. So looking forward to seeing what we discover.
Yeah, I do want to emphasize it. It's a pilot program, but the county has been very gracious and willing to work with us, and we're going to do a dry run right around the beginning of October, so we should be able to narrow down what our expectations will be. Like you said, I think anything will be an improvement.
Perfect, thank you. It's faster donkeys.
All right, and then I just wanted to highlight, because we're not going to have a conversation about, we already had a council presentation on the topic before about the item 12, which is the proclamation in support of the various Snow Mountain National Conservation Act. We've got two guests here who are, and having served with Bob before, I know he knows better than to say anything when you know you have five votes, just let go. But it, but it is an important issue, and so I'm glad to see Tony O'Meara and Bob in particular here. They're, they're tremendous resource in the county and in the state and the region and in this in the in the nation, and this is a will be an important step forward, so we're solidly behind it. All right, so those are all the questions and comments on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved by Mayor Protembiagis and seconded by Mr. Johannesen. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. We, at the request of the city manager, we will be continuing item 14 and item 15 to a date uncertain, which brings us then to item 16, which is consideration of first reading of draft ordinance 12-11 regarding proposed administrative amendments to the West Sacramento Municipal Code Title 19, Nuisance Abatement Code. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, good evening. The recent organizational move of code enforcement from our police department to the community development department necessitated several minor changes to the nuisance abatement code, which is municipal code Title 19. During the process of making these changes, we found we found some additional small corrections that needed to be made to Title 19. All of the changes that we're proposing are found in the attachments to your staff report. The amendments amendments that we're proposing fall into three general categories. First, we're changing the primary responsibility from the chief of police to the city manager in most areas of definitions section is being up to reflect the change from the uniform codes to the international codes. And third, we're adding reference to zoning ordinance chapter 17.39, which is the temporary off-site real property sign ordinance, which was omitted from the existing copy of the ordinance. So staff's recommendation is that the council waive first reading and read by title and number only ordinance 12-11, and inform the audience that the second reading and adoption of ordinance 12-11 is scheduled for October 3, 2012. And that's the end of my presentation. If you have to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions for staff? Discussion? Is there a motion then? Right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, and we'll inform the audience then that the second reading adoption of this ordinance is scheduled for October 3. Item 17 is presentation and discussion on draft guidelines for mobile food vendors. Mr. Bermudez?
Good evening, mayor council members. For you tonight is a presentation discussion on draft guidelines for mobile food vendors. Back in 2011, the city planning department was ushering in some zoning amendments, and per the direction of council, there was a request to explore and review the city's mobile food vending procedures and policies and ordinance. After getting that that guidance and task, staff did review the current ordinance and basically discovered that the zoning ordinance today does permit mobile food vendors within the city right-of-way with authority and permission by the city. It does require a tenorant vendor permit. This goes through the police department and includes review or background check. Once this review is completed, an itinerant vendor badge is sent out to the actual mobile food vendor, and they are permitted to operate in the city right-of-way. And then lastly, one of the conditions and requirements is that the mobile food vendor needs to meet the city, I'm sorry, the county, the old county health requirements for the food truck. So in its review and per the direction of council, staff reviewed kind of the ordinance and kind of determined that there was some some kind of problems with the way the ordinance reads. For many years, staff has often told mobile food vendors For many years, staff has often told mobile food vendors and anybody wanting to kind of do anything within the city right-of-way that there is a kind of a rule that you couldn't allow that. Well, per our review, actually, in, in this case, you can. We do have that authority. But in our review, we, we kind of determined that certain conditions and actual guidelines for granting this permission are not within the, the ordinance. And so, with no criteria, criteria are way to evaluate, staff kind of took another look at what other jurisdictions are doing throughout the nation and locally, to kind of remedy this problem. So what we wanted to do to kind of solve the problem is provide some clarity for the vendors, provide safety for the community, and in doing this, we wanted to have consideration of public interests. And our goal really is to establish a more informed licensing approach for staff as well as the vendors. So in reviewing kind of the particulars of mobile food vending ordinances, there are various extreme, extremes that we found in conditions. And if, you know, per direction of council, we decided to just take a course where we would not apply any kind of guidelines or any type of criteria, we could just simply allow mobile food vendors to operate within the right-of-way, provide a secure health permit, and provided a file for a business license. Or on an extreme case, we can just don't allow them at all to operate in the right-of-way. They would still be able to operate on private property with consent of a property owner. And this would still allow them the opportunity to apply for special event permits. They could be associated with the chamber events, our rodeos, that's, you see in various communities right now throughout the region. So with these extremes, staff is looking for an approach that's kind of the, a middle point between the extremes, that balances all the interests and is simple to enforce. Some variables that can be manipulated with this include the locations where mobile food vendors are allowed to operate, the duration they are allowed to stay in a particular spot doing business, the proximity to other restaurants or each other with, 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 within which they are allowed to operate, and other issues such as sanitation, restroom requirements, and ADA type of requirements. So there's a lot of variables to play with when considering mobile food vending. So contained within your staff report is kind of the, kind of a, a jumpstart and a primer of where, where we go with this particular topic. We looked at other cities, as I mentioned, Elk Grove, Sacramento. We developed some guidelines based on, you know, research. Within these guidelines, we researched with EDAC, we glossed over these guidelines with the Chamber Government Affairs Group, and we, you know, had consultation with Yolo County Health Permit, and this was to discuss kind of the permitting process for the health food requirement, which, per that discussion, we were able to generate a good discussion that they committed to meeting us, meeting the vendors within West Sacramento for their permitting requirements, thereby now the vendors don't have to travel to woodland to secure their health permit. So within our staff report, it does present some approach that we are, you know, throwing it out to the council to have a little bit further discussion, which is in seeking some guidance from council. And with this approach, what we are suggesting and, and wanting to have further conversation on is the elimination of the itinerant vendor process. We feel this will streamline their approach. It'll allow a mobile food vendor to submit a typical business license. Staff will still route the business license to the police department for review, but the whole itinerant process and review, which, you know, has, we have been told is a little bit cumbersome and, you know, inefficient, will be removed. Additionally, with, what is out there within the staff report too, as an example, would be to designate some locations that would be subject to staff review. Within the submission of an application, staff would look at these particular, a particular location or multiple sites, and look into issues of safety, functionality, accessibility, and determine if that, a location of a vendor is appropriate. In tackling the issue as the, the proximity to the brick and mortar, which is a concern in many jurisdictions, staff initially started with 100-foot requirement and limit that food trucks would be located in distant, could not be located in distance. And through our review with EDAC, as well as the Chamber, staff has kind of slid more towards finding a, a spot around 400 feet, which a typical street block is roughly about 300 to 350 feet. So, that's being suggested. We would still continue the process of allowing them on private property with consent of the owner, and they would still be required to embark and secure a Yolo County health permit. Alternatively, we have, you know, several ideas that are not included in your staff report that have come up with other jurisdictions, and one of those, I think tonight, I'd like to highlight that we recently discussed, would be the formation and creation of some type of mobile food vendor zone. And what this would entail would be somewhat of a, kind of like a zoning map or an aerial of the city. Within the zones established, we would color-code the zones, and the color-coded zones would be highlighted by a time limit, maybe two hours, three hours. We would scan the city, see what sites are appropriate, see what's, you know, if there's any conflicts, and develop and determine a time duration that a mobile food truck vendor could locate. It is pretty efficient. What we would propose to do is just require the business license, and then when the mobile food vendor would approach the city, we would just hand them the aerial eight-and-a-half-by-eleven and say, okay, here are your zones that you can operate in, and they are coordinated by the time limit. And in cases where we did not identify a colored zone, what we would do is we would direct the vendor to follow the procedures that are within the staff report, and require more of a extensive or further review to make sure we're handling logistics and its relationship to safety, functionality, accessibility, as well as proximity to other food businesses. So that's another example of an alternative. As I mentioned, this is a discussion item. Staff is, you know, really starting to kind of determine where we go with the mobile food vending ordinance, and kind of having to review what other changes in the code that may be required per direction of council. So any approach that the city takes will definitely have a direct or indirect consequence. Our intent with the staff report is to provide the basis for council to explore some of the trade-offs involved, and provide staff with direction that will help us develop a refined set of guidelines for council consideration at a later date. Concludes staff's presentation.
Mr. Johannes.
Yes, Jim. I think, I think Sacramento is, I think they're about ready to vote on their ordinance, if I understand. One of the things, one we're going through is, I know, I don't see an hour of operation in the draft guidelines. I know there's negotiations in Sacramento between maybe extending hours in exchange for proximity to other restaurants. And I think they have a 200-foot limit within the dense urban areas in 400 feet, which is what this proposes. You know, one of the things on this is, I'd like to see kind of what the difference is between what we're proposing and what Sacramento's proposing, because I think what we'd want to do is encourage the movement of trucks around the riverfront on both sides of the river, and not have regulations that are so different that, you know, we don't really have that interaction. You know, one issue would be health permits. Do they have to have two health permits, or can we use Sac County health permit to operate within West Sac, or Yolo to operate with, you know, something like that? That would make it easy for these, these people to move around kind of this downtown core area. And to kind of look at maybe the differences between what Sacramento has and what we have, so we can see if there's any areas that would be potential points of conflict.
Yeah, I, I, let me jump in on that too, because I agree 100% on, on both, on both points. The, and I know, you know, the staff's been looking at the Sacramento ordinance as well, which is also under some evolution, as, as you know, as they're trying to grapple with some of this, but we need the, it, it is one market, and it's, and it's, these are all, these are already sort of, I don't know, ragtag, but it's a different kind of an industry, and so creating lots of different regulatory environments that apply. And they're not just in the urban core. I mean, I was, I was at the Elk Grove Mobile Food Festival at the invitation of their mayor last, over the weekend, and they've been going, they've been in Roseville a lot. So there's, there really is an emerging regional need for some of these issues, and the health permit ones, one of the obvious ones, because, you know, the, the, the standards are the same, whether you're in Placer, or Sacramento, or Yolo, but you got, you have to keep paying the same fee in addition to driving to woodland, and that, it's good to, you know, that, that, that issue solved. But, you know, could there be some reciprocity, so that you pay a small fee to Yolo for the right to be able to use your Sacramento permit? I think is, is exactly the kind of thing that would be helpful. I mean, having just gone to Denver, and, and if you go to San Francisco now any day of the week to their, to their downtown core, of course Portland and other places, but, you know, virtually every major urban center in the US now is heavily populated by these trucks, and it, and you can see even among the restaurant industry. I mean, when, when we, when we, when the Broderick food truck pod essentially was announced a couple of weeks ago, the very first public hooray was from the eatery. Because they, it's become quite clear, there, there, there's no examples of restaurants going out of business as a result of food trucks. There's a lot of examples of food trucks injecting some energy into the local, the local foodie, food consumption. They remind you to go out and eat, and frankly, if you try to, if you get like attached to one of these trucks, and it doesn't come, or it's in some other location, you're like, well, I was already planning on going out, it's not here, I think I'll just go to the nearest restaurant. There's just not, the, the evidence so far has been that there's much more synergy than there is, you know, a sort of competition with the, with the brick and mortars. But even beyond that, I mean, I think, you know, if we had tried to regulate, over-regulate Amazon or something to try to protect Barnes &amp; Noble, or regulate Netflix to try to protect Blockbuster, that's not, one, that's not in the interest of our citizens. I mean, they, our citizens should, in my view, should have the choice to use the model that they want. But second, it's just out and out illegal. I mean, we're not allowed to adopt regulations, the, the express purpose of which is to advantage one industry sector over another. In this case, in particular, our regulatory authority derives mainly from our ability to regulate public safety. And I think, I certainly think you could make a case for the zone argument. I like that, I like that idea a lot, on the basis of a zone, where the zone is defined not on where, where are there no restaurants that we want to protect, but the zone is defined on where are there, you know, the equivalent of a food desert, you know, where's, where's there nowhere to eat, right? Which is a different thing, right? Because then, then what you're focusing on is, you know, which is a legitimate public purpose, which is creating opportunities for your citizens to have options to eat, is different from, we are here to protect specific companies against other companies. And that's where I think we run into both legal problems, but also just, you know, problems with, our, our citizens ought to be able to make that choice for them, for themselves. So I think, I, the zone idea makes some, makes some sense to me. I mean, I, I think we should be, you know, looking, looking at this issue over the last couple, the last year, when I first brought it up as well, and then trying to work with some of the mobile food industry people in the region. It's, you know, this is an area to really have our eyes wide open. It's a, it's a diverse industry that's at least split into two, two, you know, camps, and one of which, I was describing to Mayor Rotenbiagas, is sort of the marijuana dispensary camp, which is, you know, mobile food is protected under the Constitution and the UN Charter of Human Rights, and no city shall ever interfere with it in any possible way. And we will sue and protest and, you know, poison your water supply if you try. And then there's another camp of, we want to, we, we just want to, we just want to have a successful business and feed people, and let's sit down and figure out what, what the right regulatory environment looks like. And so being aware of that, I think, is important. And to me, part of the way, that, one, one way that we might think about solving that, because this whole issue of the 100 feet or 400 feet, I think is a huge legal problem, even if it's one foot or 1,000 feet. I mean, it's the fundamental issue, and I know this is the problem that the Sacramento City Attorney has identified as well, is just whether, whether or not you can do that when your express purpose is not about public safety, it's not about a public purpose other than the protection of a specific restaurant. But whether there's a different way to solve that, which is to have a fairly tough general mobile food ordinance, that, that, you know, that requires a certain amount of sidewalk width and other sorts of things, and then have a second option, that, that where there's essentially, there's something of value for folks who, who agree to participate in a, in a otherwise voluntary framework, that you say, okay, you, if you agree that you will, you know, sea serving at 10 o'clock, and that you will not be in this area, and you won't, and you'll do this, and you won't do this, you'll do this, you won't do that, then you will have access to this zone. Or we'll stripe, you know, we will stripe a, you know, a parking, a space, certain kinds of spaces in the city that are available for, for mobile food trucks, but only essentially licensed mobile food trucks who agree to this regulatory framework. Others can operate, we won't stop you, but you can't operate in those, those spaces are only for, for the, for the trucks that agree to our framework. Then you have, then, and that framework could then include, you can't park in front of a restaurant, right? Because then there's a consideration being given, it's not just a, a regulatory attack. So I, I think that there are some ways to address this issue, and I know, you know, I've spoken with Sacramento as well, they're looking at some of these options, although they're no farther along than we are, that, that trying to come up with as much as we can, a common framework makes, makes, makes some sense. Because, you know, when we, when the Broderick folks announced the, the food truck thing here, and when Trucktoberfest was announced and all that, I, I gotta tell you, the most of the responses I got from, from folks in the community, including the restaurants, were, hooray, this is a good thing. Not, not, oh my God, it's, it's going to shut down Carols. And so I, I'm trying to think about our residents having identified access to places to go out and eat as one of their top priorities, that figuring out how to make this work makes a lot of sense. Mayor Rotenbiagas?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. So in terms of the, I, I agree with, with, with what you're, you're proposing this evening. The, the color zone is very attractive to me, and I'm just wondering, I don't, I don't see it in the staff report, but is there discussion at all about the hours? Because frankly, it seems to me that later in the evening is when the vendors would, maybe, I don't know, but it seems like they would be more successful, because there are less restaurants, and folks that are looking for some, kind of a variety after six, seven, eight o'clock at night. I know some of the ones in the surrounding cities are very successful later in the evening when no, there's no other option, so I'm just wondering, and there's not much discussion about that.
The way that it was, it was shaped is, due to the fact, the guidelines within your staff report are laid out, and it being that it required a staff review, that the hours of operation, one, where you would be located would be discussed, as well as, you know, the hours of operation in general, you know, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, that would come out of that review process. So, it wasn't, you know, a set time. I, I can provide you, you know, information from Sacramento, whereas their SACPD basically has requested at this point in their evolution of 11:00 PM shutdown for mobile food throughout Sacramento.
Well, you would think the cops would be the first ones that wanted to go until 3:00 in the morning, because they're dying for other places to eat, especially good food to eat at 3:00 in the morning. So, well, I'm just curious about that, and I'd like to keep tabs on that, because I think later hours, it would seem to me that there would be an opportunity. Maybe I'm just missing the boat completely, but it's something I want to keep that on the table.
That is a good example of the zone idea, I think. You might, you might say the riverfront, you know, the riverfront zone is the entertainment district, and so that, the time limit there is 1:00 AM, and the time limit in a purely residential area is 7:00 PM. I mean, there, that if, if, you know, for, for those who sign up, and if you don't sign up, then, then, you know, we will make it, we will make it harder.
Right, so, right, so on that point, it would seem to me that our practice ought to be, let's ask them what they think would be most successful, because that's what we all want, and then scale back from there, rather than saying, let's create some arbitrary dates, 11 o'clock or whatever, and then have them try to work around that. It, it would seem to me we'd be more, better served by asking them to have some say in kind of how we manage that, within reason, obviously, using the zone, colored zone, Darius, that you spoke about earlier.
Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, well, there's a couple of things that, that come to mind, and, I mean, we in West Sacramento are, it's, it's sort of a unique situation, because we really don't have a lot of the restaurants that, you know, Sacramento has and other places have. We don't have that yet. When, you know, the, the rivers area gets hustling and bustling, we, we will have a lot more of that. But we just don't have it yet. And I guess one of the things I wonder about, and that would be, if we put some ordinance in place, will the brick and mortar restaurants not come? That, I think, needs to be explored. Will the brick and mortar people feel, well, there are so many of these food trucks running around until 10, 11 o'clock at night, that, you know, it'll be very hard for me to break into that, that kind of business? So I, I think something like that needs to happen. And I also like the 400-foot. Personally, I like the 400-foot distance. Personally, I like the 400-foot distance that would be away from brick and mortar. But I would certainly like to at least explore it a little bit more from a, a legal perspective, because I think the mayor's right. You could really run into some problems from a legality perspective. And I also think that the color-coded areas are really worth exploring, because then I think you could put different restrictions on the food industry itself, as far as the number of hours, as far as a lot of the things that, that they do. But I would certainly check with the police department to make sure that they fully understand what goes on as far as having these various vans running all over your city. So I would certainly check with them to make sure that they look through whatever issues they need to look through. Thank you.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. I, I think this is great, and, and just outlining, I, I honestly have not delved into the mobile food truck issue, but I am, I consider myself a foodie and, and, and look forward to creating the food culture that you sort of outlined at the beginning of this, that, that this could, this could bring. And I, I did have in mind, we should have a map or zones to where these food trucks go. Again, I didn't know that whether or not they were designing spaces already in, in Sacramento, or that they just park and find a place, or they have to register that with the city. So it's good to know that we're thinking ahead of it. Maybe there are, we know there are a dozen many places these can go and create that, 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 that sense of space, and the, and the excitement and the energy that, that we want, particularly in, in the British District and the Riverfront area. I think that's the opportunity. So I, I would encourage us to, to kind of continue down the path, specifically what Mr. Johansson brought up, and the mayor brought up as well, was the, the issue of, the, the tricky one is that, how do you deal with the, with a county license, the health, from the health code perspective? And I think that, that's one that we, we need to figure out. And I, if there's a way we can, we can leverage each other, both counties, and kind of come up to with, with a set of guidelines that meet both our needs, but there's some shared, we can share that, and, and so Sacramento folks can get their permit here as well. I think that's great. I would say, though, I want to comment on Mr. Kristof's point, which is, how do we, how do we encourage restaurants? How do we keep the, the brick and mortar restaurants? And I think this would actually encourage restaurant growth. But in the same breath that we have taken a look at how we can encourage mobile food vendors, maybe the next step is to look at a little closer what we could do to encourage brick and mortar restaurants, to leverage off that. We have development coming. If, with, if the Yolo County is allowing us to issue health permits here for mobile foods, maybe that would make it easier for a restaurant to stop themselves here. So those kind of things just come to mind, is maybe this is a, a leverage point and something we can, we can use going forward as, as to be a little bit more, to encourage that industry as well. So I think it's a good, a good jumping off point, but I, I like the direction we're going.
Yeah. And one of the things that came, was clear out of the, the food and hub team that we put together, that, that developed the mayor's challenge proposal, was, is just how difficult it is to start a res, a brick and mortar restaurant. It's, because you, you can't just start out of your house, you can't just, I'm gonna work my regular full-time job and then, you know, kind of test it. You can't do it. In order to get a health permit, you gotta have a fully licensed commercial kitchen, you know, you're unlikely to be able to do it if you're only open one day a week. I mean, there, there's, the, the barriers to entry for brick and mortar restaurant is huge, which is why the mobile food trucks, part of the service that they provide essentially is allow you to prove your market, right? That they're, okay, there is, we've been saying for a while, but we're not restaurateurs, that between the rivers, both phases of the rivers, plus Alcorn Village, plus Metro Place, plus Metro Square, Riverside of Washington Square, plus the apartments, there ought to be enough consumer demand to support additional places to eat. But we don't, I mean, we're government, we're not the ones putting our skin on the line. And so if you, if you, if you're a local resident, you will say, well, well, I want to start one there. The, the costs to do that are huge. And so the extent to which food trucks provide an alternative way to be able to assess, without a gigantic upfront cost that is completely tied to a particular location, to be able to test a market, they do provide a valuable service and be able, you know, if we've, we've got food trucks that are based at this new Broderick Restaurant, for example, they start to show that there's, there's, you know, demand for Mama Kim's, you know, Korean tacos, but not so much for, you know, some, for hot, the hot dog truck or whatever, it starts to give you a better picture of actual consumer demand. You know, what are people actually willing to buy, that would, that I, I think is an important part of being able to make the case longer term for, 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 for brick and mortar, for brick and mortar. And in fact, a lot of the restaurants that have been opening in the region have been food trucks either opening up a restaurant too, like the Broderick Restaurant is, or moving out of the mobile business into the brick and mortar.
Yeah. And, and it occurs to me, as you're, as you're saying that, it creates not just their market and, and their niche in the market, which is the ever-loving point, is you want to be able to get, establish a market. But for most of the, I'm assuming for most of the, the mobile food trucks, this is their first venture, so it creates a history, a business history. And in the business I'm in, that's one of the biggest inhibitors to access to capital, is you don't have a proven business plan, you don't have a proven management skills, and this is that incubator, so to say, to get them off. And so it could create that environment where folks all of a sudden can graduate on and, and find an easier path to establish a restaurant. So that's why I like the idea of this, because it does, there, it is synergistic if you position it the right way. But you have to give, the, the brick and mortar is the same consideration as well, sort of how, how do you build that pathway? But this is a great, great work.
I guess, I guess one of the problems that I'm having with this, and that would be is, we'll, we'll say we had an area that is set aside, and you have five of these trucks that can go into the triangle area at a specific place. If you have that, then that is going to make it more difficult for that brick and mortar restaurant. They're not even going to try. They're gonna say, hey, look, I, these people have got all of, you know, all these different kinds of foods and all this other thing. And so then what you end up with is no brick and mortar restaurant, but what you end up with is five trucks lined up in a, on a, on a block. And so I, I just have some, I guess I have some concern with that. And it would be like Sal's. How many of these food trucks, if they lined up across the street from Sal's restaurant, you know, I don't think Sal would be all that happy. Those are the kinds of things I think we need to feather out. I sort of like the idea of go ahead and do it, but at the same time, I think we need to make sure that we don't put some impediments in place for the, especially the new brick and mortar restaurant. I just don't want any impediments there, because we need more of those kinds of eateries within our city. We've got enough fast food places, we've got enough trucks running around, there's a lot of them. I mean, I see them all throughout the industrial area. And so I think what we need is, is we really do need some brick and mortar restaurants. I mean, that's one of the reasons we moved Denny's, or we at least helped support that move over to Harbor Boulevard. But I'd like to, you know, do you, well, anyway. I mean, I think you know where I'm going with that, so. But I just think we really need to talk to, you know, the Sal's, and we need to talk to the P Club, we need to talk to the Fish and Chips place, and, you know, we, we just, we need to talk to Carol's across the way, and, and see, how will this affect you? Is this something you think is going to benefit you? Will there be other restaurants that start up so that people can go from your place to their place, and one night they're at location X, and the next night they're at location Y? I mean, that's what happens downtown. But they have so many restaurants that are brick and mortar already, that are, that are there.
And more that are opening. I mean, I don't know of a restaurant that says-
I know some of them are closing too!
Where is there that nobody's going to eat, so that I can, going out to eat, so that I can open a restaurant? I mean, that, that's just not, it's not a viable strategy. Restaurants want to be clustered with, where people are going out to eat. And when there's no room that night, or the kids change their mind on the way and say, oh, I don't want that kind of food, that there's another, there's other stuff around, that they, they feed off of one another. And, and, I, I, we've almost doubled the city's population in the, you know, since, certainly since we incorporated, and virtually all of the new eating is in the same, you know, Four Corners area of, of Lake Washington, Linden and Jefferson. The, the, you know, so I, I, I think we've tested the no food truck impact, and we haven't gotten the kind of food eating that we want, even on West Capitol Avenue, on Sacramento Avenue. So to me, I think it's worth, it's worth a shot. But, I mean, I know, I, what, what I've heard from restaurateurs is, they, they do not want them parked right in front of their door. And I think there are ways for us to deal with that, but we can't just ban food trucks altogether in any, in any serious way. And so either we come up with an ordinance that works, that shapes and directs where food trucks are, and in what form, and when, and all of that, or we come up with an ordinance that's either super tough and is gonna get thrown out by a court, or we just let chaos reign. And I, I don't think those are, those are good alternatives either. So I think, really, it's figuring out how to, how to come up, how to use these tools to write, to get the right ordinance going. But frankly, I think, I mean, I know the, the, the British District folks would love to have, you know, they've asked, you know, is there something in your ordinances that's preventing food trucks from coming here? Because they see it as a way to, to create a buzz around the area, to, to show, to prove that market demand, and to get folks thinking about that, that is the, you know, it fits the branding that they have for that area specifically. So I, I, first, I think it's worth a, worth a shot, especially if we now are gonna have at the Broderick Restaurant, a, a hub, a pod of our own that's in the city limits, that will be serving, you know, four or five of the food trucks directly, and, and making that a center. Mr. Johansson?
Maybe just to address the, the issue of the clustering, I worked over a decade on 18th and Capitol downtown, and that was before ZOCLO's or anything else was there. And what had happened is, once you had one restaurant come in, another restaurant would come in, another restaurant would come in, and then it turns into a place. And I think that these food trucks have the opportunity to create placemakers, basically. And so, you know, I, I would agree that you probably don't want one parked right in front of your restaurant, but I just see it's, the synergy is gonna be extraordinary, and help people know, because if they know they're, they go to a place, you know, basically a food truck, you've gotta stand and eat, and you have some folding chairs, every you stir, you're still standing. So, you know, they're there once or twice, but then you're gonna go to, what else we have in the neighborhood? So, you know, and you could walk a short distance. So I think it's gonna be great, you know, and particularly if we have a place where, where these things are consistently at a location, or, so you can work into what we're doing on West Capitol Avenue, Bridges, or wherever, use it really as a placemaker.
I, I do think, I, for me, I would like to, I mean, the, the kind of parameters and stuff that we've talked about, I think we need to put in the ordinance and/or in guidance. I don't, I, I'm not a fan of the staff will determine on a case-by-case basis, individual review, because if you're trying to plan a business and you don't know what the rules are, you just have to hope you're catching Jim Bermudas on a happy day? It's just not, I mean, one, it's not fair, but two, you can't, I mean, you can't, you need to know, I mean, before you ask your wife, am I gonna do this or not, before you go to the bank. And so being clear about what it is, what the rules of the game are, for everyone involved, I think is just a lot of fair. Plus, if I go and meet with Jim and try to get one of these, these permits approved, and he's making up the rules as we go along, then, you know, if, if I was planning on parking in front of the eatery, and Jim's like, sure, go ahead and do that, that day, the eatery wasn't in the room. So they don't, they don't get a chance to know that the, you know, what the rules are being discussed. So I think we need to take the time to articulate, to the extent that we can, what the, you know, what the, what the criteria and the, and the guidance is, as opposed to having it all be case-by-case.
And counsel, we, we've heard this more of a regional market, so we have the advantage of picking, building on what the city of Sacramento is doing, and maybe enhancing this with the zone and the map. So, you know, with your permission, we can come back and discuss this a little bit more, come up with targeted zones and be able to map those, and as restaurants build up, then be able to revisit that, that map as well. But get started so that as the city of Sacramento adopts theirs, ours is fairly consistent so that sends a real signal that we're open for business for trucks.
And just one final point, the, the coordination with the county, Yolo County Public Health is, is essential. I'll be honest, I mean, the feedback that I've gotten from restaurateurs or those that have considered starting is a huge hurdle, a lot of work. It is what it is, I can't compare it to any others, but I know that it's been, it's been difficult for folks to-
The health permit?
Yes. The health permit for restaurants in Yolo County.
You know, they've been, the, the county's been pretty supportive for the, Parks and Rec has the October Truck Festival, they're gonna come and do a one-day permitting, so that the trucks could come in and get their, their permits on a single day, make it really convenient for them.
Maybe fold them into the conversation early on rather than after, might be, might help facilitate a smoother transition.
And the idea of being able to honor permits from other adjacent counties makes a lot of sense, but staff's research, and that's against state law, but maybe that's something that, that could get modified. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have a, a truck operator have three valid permits in a, in a region.
All right. Do you have enough feedback?
Absolutely.
All right. Then item, after the, item 18 is consideration of first reading of draft ordinance 12-8, amending chapter 8.111 of the Municipal Code regarding, regarding alarm systems.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At the August 15th council meeting, staff presented information regarding the types of alarm calls the police department receives to better assess potential penalties for false alarms. And council provided direction for staff to provide additional options for the penalty provisions. As such, an analysis was conducted to devise alternative measures. The goal of the proposed plan is to reduce the number of false alarms, which divert limited resources to non-emergency events, yet not place undue financial hardship on alarm users who may have simply made an alarm error. The proposed plan would provide for a viable alarm program, and would assess no fee for the annual permit, and allow two false alarm responses within a one-year period without Proposed changes to the book of fees schedule will come before the city council at a future meeting, and not become effective until the council adopts those revisions. At this time, I'd like to open it up for discussion.
So we've had this, we've had this before the council, in a spirited conversation several times. I do want to, I, it's clear that the, they paid a lot of attention to the comments that have been made over the last two, two meetings, in trying to resolve the, I think, what were the two outstanding concerns at the last meeting, which were, there was some, there were, the members of the council were uncomfortable with the charging a fee for, for the registration of the alarm systems at the front end, particularly given the large number of grandfathered, essentially, alarm systems that were in place, and the potential of charging at the second alarm. And, and you've addressed both of those issues from our last meeting in these revisions.
Yes.
I would just like to say, I think you've done a super job. I think you and the chief deserve a pat on the back. I think you listened, you've heard what we've had to say, and I like what it is. So, good job. Mayor Potembiagis?
Yeah, I was just looking for how you planned, I, I agree too. I think you guys, you've, you've come back with what I think is, is a reasonable approach, much better than what I think we, we were considering the last, last round. What I think might be helpful, maybe the next step as you move forward, assuming you do, is that make sure that folks understand what is now in place, because it's different than what we currently have. And I think anytime, in my opinion, anytime we're making these kinds of changes, you might have to let folks know a couple times, just to remind them that, look, this is, this is very costly, here's why we've come up with this change in our practice, and here's what it's gonna mean to you if you aren't, you know, responsible for your home alarm Because I think that, that's, that's good, responsible local government. So I think I, I can live with what I think you've proposed here, so hopefully to move forward.
Further comments? Yes, please. Mr. Ledesma?
Hi. Thank you for the presentation, and I apologize, I was not at the August meeting, so this is my second view of it. But I, I, I agree with the changes or, that you made regarding fee upon permit. I just had some, some questions, though, on, on, and I guess enforcement or otherwise, because some of the language in the ordinance that I read through assumes that the homeowner or the business will provide evidence that we're, they'll let you, let us know somehow we're getting an, getting an alarm. And I'm trying to figure out how that, what is, are we on the honor system with, if I'm a new homeowner and getting an alarm, how will that be enforced, that- a new homeowner and getting an alarm, how will that be enforced, that you owe a permit? Or that you have to get a permit?
Yes. The vendor that we're looking at working with, we did do an RFP process, we have an identified vendor, and one of the, the services they offer is that they develop a database of all the customers based on working with the alarm companies that have customers in West Sacramento.
Okay.
And from that, we work with the alarm companies for them, to educate them upon getting their alarm system. And then also, it allows us the opportunity to have their information so we can send them out informational materials to educate them about the changes.
Okay. And that would encourage them at the time of getting that, hey, we need to have a permit so we know you're, we need to register that you have a-
Yes, and it's also advantageous, I think, to the actual alarm user, because it allows on the application to give special directives, is there, are there medical conditions to be aware of? Do we have pets in the home? All of that, which I think is advantageous, you know, to, for response purposes.
Okay. That's my only question, thank you.
I would just say, I'll bet you learned more about alarms and alarm systems in the last six months than you have in a long time.
Oh, yeah.
I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt ordinance 12-8 amending the, amending chapter 8.11 of the city's municipal code related to alarm systems.
Is there a second? All right, Mayor Portemvegas? Additional comment?
No, no, I'm, I'm fine. That's, that's right. Well, I'm sorry, yeah, second thought. Because this is a change in how we're doing, so just a question to clarify, so this is, this is only going to apply to those that have monitored alarms. So if your alarm is not monitored, it does not apply?
It would apply.
It would still apply?
Yes, we're also going to do a general-
I forgot where we left that last time.
Mass campaign of, you know, advertisement in the local media.
Got it, okay. I couldn't remember where we left that last time. I guess the other thing is, it would be helpful if you circled back with us and gave us an update, update on kind of where it ended up, because I am curious to know just how many people are in violation of the practice. I guess depending on when it goes into effect, give it a full year to see just what it looks like in terms of, I mean, I guess if we end up with multiple pages of violations and we're now talking about liens and all kinds of other complicated cost, costly measures to collect these fees or do whatever it is that next step is going to be, I, I would, I'd like to see what that looks like. So if you can circle back with, with whatever you determine is an appropriate amount of time to assess the status of the change in policy, it'd be helpful.
All right, with that, we have a motion before us. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item 19 is consideration, did they give you a second one?
Yes.
Consideration of draft urgency ordinance 12-9 and consideration and first reading of draft ordinance 12-10 reinstating sections 9.30.090 through 9.30.130 of the city's municipal code and amending section 9.30.140 relating to the limitations to access to tobacco products.
On November 4th, 2009, the council adopted ordinance 9-20 which required tobacco retailers to obtain a permit to sell tobacco and tobacco paraphernalia. And the purpose was to provide the police department an additional regulatory means of reducing the sale of tobacco to minors and incorporated provisions set forth by the California Stop Tobacco Access to Kids, the STAKE Act. And an extensive educational outreach was conducted to assist tobacco retailers in understanding and implementing the changes in regulation. And since the ordinance went into effect, numerous compliance checks and decoy operations have been conducted, and that's resulted in a 70% decrease in crimes involving minors in tobacco. The proposed urgency ordinance would take effect immediately and allow the continuance of enforcement operations. Staff further recommends that the council, under separate action, introduce and approve a first reading by title-only ordinance 12-10. And at this time, I'd like to open for discussion.
Any questions? Discussion? Or is there a motion on the urgency ordinance then, 12-9? It's been moved by Mayor Portemvegas and seconded by Mr. Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. And those who motion to a wave first reading, read by title number only, ordinance 12-10.
That as well?
All right, moved by Mayor Portemvegas and seconded by Mr. Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. That motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to council calendar. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind the council that on the 26th of September, there is a Yellow Leader Summit in Davis. On that same night, there's also the first community meeting for the Washington Renaissance. Also, as you mentioned earlier, on the 29th of October, of September, I'm sorry, we're going to have Trucktoberfest over at the Riverwalk Park, and that should be a fun day of music and eating. In October, you'll notice on the poster on the wall over there, our photo contest is back, and we're going to be asking photos that depict life over the last 25 years in the city of West Sacramento, so that's one of our 25th anniversary celebration items. And the video contest will be coming to the council with the winners sometime in October, which is also related to our 25th anniversary. Not on your calendar is the Chamber's Annual Business Walk, which is going to take place on October 4th from 8:30 to 2:00 p.m. So if anybody's interested in that, you can sign up at the Chamber. On that same evening, there's going to be a candidate forum that's being sponsored by the Chamber and the Seroptimists International, and we will have that broadcast on the local cable channel. On the 10th of October, the Fraud Awareness Fair will be here in the Galleria. Again, we've had, we've hosted this fair that is put on by the District Attorney's Office for several years now, and it's, it's well received by primarily a lot of seniors in our communities. That, that takes place from 10 to 3 in, in the Galleria. That's all.
You didn't say anything about October 7th. You covered every other date for the next two months.
October 7th.
No, I'm, I'm just kidding. Mayor Portemvegas?
Carol, the, the date again is, is the October, October 4th?
For the Business Walk?
Yeah.
Yes.
The breakfast here at 8:30.
And it goes from what time, I'm sorry?
8:30 to 2:00.
And I know staff is putting together an invitation at the end of the week, so if you're interested and like to have your name on that invitation, let us know.
City manager report?
Well, we had the Jefferson Boulevard Signal presentation to make, but before that, I wanted to say that Carol's not a football fan, because she failed to mention that next Friday night, not this Friday night, but is the opener for the Sacramento Mountain Lions at Rayleigh Field, professional football team plays. They actually play tonight in Las Vegas. On the 28th, they'll play Omaha here. And the Rayleigh Field owners have been working with the chief and the police department in terms of providing police officers at that event, and that's been going well, and they'll, they will have a presence there. So football aside, we do have a short-
Burger battle was great last night.
I'm sorry?
If anybody went to the Sacramento burger battle at Rayleigh Field last night, it was a, it was also a great event. Big success. It was. Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so with that, I'd like to have Mike Lukin, our port and transportation manager, make a short presentation on our efforts on the Jefferson Street Signal Coordination.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. As indicated by the city manager, we'll make a short presentation on the memo that was put on your dais this evening and update you on the Jefferson Boulevard Advanced Traffic Management System that was installed earlier last year. This issue is of very importance, of great importance to the community, as Jefferson Boulevard is one of the most highly-used traffic corridors in the city. And as such, the Public Works Department proposed to the council last year a system called the Advanced Traffic Management System to essentially allow staff to monitor and make corrective actions to traffic flow along the Jefferson Corridor. And the reason we picked this corridor, in addition to it being the most heavily-traffic corridor in the city, is we also have fiber optic communications located at key intersections along this corridor. And so we chose these six to seven intersections from North Linden to 15th Street as the, the rollout of a traffic management system. We're one of the few communities in the Sacramento region of our size that does not have one of these. And what this system allows us to do is, instead of the, the former process, which was to go out when you had a change in traffic flow, whether it be, for example, the opening of 5th Street in our case, or, or, or school starting, or, or any other change in flow, in the past, we had to go out to these key intersections and have our traffic staff, as well as transportation consultants and engineers, go out to each intersection and manually adjust the timing of each intersection. And that was a very laborious process. It also was a very hit-and-miss process whereby if you modified one intersection, you wouldn't necessarily know how that would affect the other intersection. And, and so when we recommended the system back in November and then installed it this summer, what this allows us to do is that from a, our, our traffic staff, from a, from, literally from their desktop or from a laptop computer, they can adjust the signal timing along this corridor. What the system also does too is it makes minor adjustments in the timing as you have different things happen on a regular basis, such as preemptions due to emergency vehicles or pedestrian crossings. It allows, literally during the time which, at which it is operating during the peak hour, it allows it to make small adjustments to the signal timing and operate as a system as opposed to one intersection and allow the signals to get back into sync. It was brought to our attention on the 11th, though, that further adjustments need to be made. So this system allows for minor adjustments, but as the larger the change in traffic flow for one reason or another, you might have to actually go out into the field and make, make more radical adjustments. And that's what we had to do in the past week. We had to go out to these intersections, both our staff and with the help of Farr and Pierce, our traffic engineers and Western Signal, who is the vendor of our system, went out and made adjustments to the system and a more, I hate to use the term radical, but more robust in nature in order to make those back in sync. And even in the past couple days, we've gone out and made adjustments, for example, to the Monobello or Monticello intersection to make the flow at that intersection work more, work better. But then we can go back and manage the system with the Advanced Traffic Management System to make sure that it's operating possibly, or properly. Now, in the midst of all this, we also had a, a, a power outage, which is a whole different scenario in terms of our traffic signals. But it helped us realize that, that we need some improvements in that arena as well. On September 17th, we had a general power outage here in town, which not only these signals, but signals along Industrial Boulevard and Harbor Boulevard were also out for a longer period of time. And what we had to do is go out and install on a temporary basis, mobile generators at different intersections, and then waiting for, for the power to come back on by PG&E. And then when the power came back on, the system again kicks into gear and brings the system into synchronization for the next day for the, for the peak hour period. What we learned through this power outage is that we need to take a look again at, at the ability to have backup power to these key intersections. In, in most of the newer areas of the city, and very newer areas of the city, I should say, most of the new intersections have backup power, but these older intersections, including all the six you see on this screen here, do not have backup power. So we're going to be looking into methods to retrofit those signal lights so that there is some type of backup power available. We may have an opportunity with the fire department, who's recently obtained some backup generators to, to have a mobilization of, of those when needed, and then also look at individual backup, battery backup systems for those intersections. With that, what we, what we plan to do as next steps is, is one, is to robustly monitor the situation. We've been doing that for a week, and we'll continue to do that as we move forward, looking at the peak hour and continuing to make adjustments as needed. We have some automated things in the system that allow us to monitor through an email system when things get out of sequence. I mentioned the battery backup power, and then we're going to continue to educate our staff on the workings of this system in an effort to reduce the reliance on consultants and, and have our staff trained to utilize the software to its fullest extent. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Also in the audience, excuse me, is Peter Hanson with our traffic staff and Bob Grandy with Farr and Pierce, our on-call traffic consultant.
Well, thanks, thanks, Mike. I appreciate you bringing it forward. I asked for it in large part because of just the number of complaints progressively, just the number of complaints were increasing on a daily basis. And I know that during, when school starts, it always sort of changes everything. And I guess the expectation was that since the system is already in place, that, that those adjustments would take place. But I, I think I understand it a little bit more. I think your, your recommendations make sense, and I'm glad that there's a little bit more attention being paid to the system that we already paid for, that should be doing what it's doing today, because it is extremely frustrating and unpredictable on most mornings when we, folks don't know just how long it's going to take to get through that corridor, which otherwise can, as we now know today, can move relatively simply. So thanks, thanks for the information. I think, I think folks who heard it will have a better understanding for tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I've, I have received complaints about it as well, and you know how I feel about the Monticello one. I hope Monticello's at the minimum operable time, given the necessity of that. And the other, which I don't, frankly, since we're, since Mr. Viegas put this on the table, I do not understand the Tower Bridge Gateway signals at all. The amount of time that Tower Bridge Gateway stops for 5th Street is amazing. I mean, it's, it really, and, and there's just, yeah, and then, and then it lights up, it then turns green for like two cars. And since the number of cars going on Tower Bridge Gateway is just like 100 times as many as on 5th Street, it just seems like a very odd arrangement. And while we're out of, there's several of the new ones that we've installed that I cannot make, I can't trip with my bicycle. Where we have built, affirmatively built bicycle-oriented streets, and you can't, like this one right here, you can't turn left on West Cap, off, off, off West Capitol onto Merkley with a bicycle. But you don't know that until you're trapped in the middle of the street and nobody will turn you left. So I, I mean, this is one of those areas that we only, we only pay attention to when they, when they're a problem, but you know, I'd like, personally, I would like to learn a little bit more about how some of these things work, not at the dais, but so I can be better able to answer questions. All right. We have no staff direction, oh, I'm sorry, city attorney report. Staff direction from members of the council other than this? We have no future agenda item requests? Our motion to adjourn? Mr. Chris, I have moved and-
Mr. Mayor, if I could move, in, in memory of the Pipe King, we lost a pillar in our community, Lou Arges passed away, and services were held for him this week. He's a longtime, a long, longtime resident in this community, a huge proponent of, of a lot of what we've done in this community, and he's, you know, a longtime farmer, businessman, and a well-respected individual, also known as the Pipe King. So we close in honor of him.
Yeah, he was a good guy, but he was a great guy.
I'll second it. Yep, this is not debatable, but I would just, so I'm not going to debate, but I will say, I, I very much appreciate the motion. He was one of the first people I ever met in this, in the city, and despite that, I closed escrow on, on my house. He was, he was, represented sort of the rugged, individualistic, take no prisoners, but, but very caring and sincere and neighborly and community-oriented people in, in the, in the city. And it's a, it's a, it's a great loss, but he certainly made his mark on our community and helped West Sacramento become what it is. So with that, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, the motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.